Good morning, and I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting of October the 15th, and we will call our meeting to order. I'll start out with the roll call, and we have from Asfidel Norwood, Mayor Wilford.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Burt.
Good morning.
And online, Kevin Monaghan, we have Mayor Graham.
Present.
And Deputy Mayor Huntley.
Here.
And Duro Dummer, we have Mayor Watson. And online, Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Present.
From Havlock Belmont Bethune, we have Mayor Martin.
Present.
And Deputy Mayor Webb.
Present.
From North Corther, we have Mayor Amyad.
Good morning.
And Deputy Mayor Whelan.
Still here.
And we're glad of it, Jim. Jonathan South Monaghan, Mayor Taylor.
Here.
And myself, Deputy Mayor Clark. From Salwen, we have the Deputy Warden and Mayor Sennis.
Good morning.
And Deputy Mayor Black.
Present.
And from Trent Lakes, we have Mayor Lambshead.
I am present.
And online, Deputy Mayor Armstrong. Welcome.
Present.
We'll now start with our land acknowledgement. With deep respect, we acknowledge we acknowledge the lands and interconnected waterways that bind us together, the foundation for all life. These lands serve as a keeper of history and stories and are a source of inspiration. In recognizing this, we embrace that all living things possess an important energy and purpose. We extend the utmost gratitude to the original peoples who have been caretakers of these lands and waters of this region from time immemorial, and to this day who continue this commitment. Peterborough County's dedication to reconciliation remains steadfast. In this spirit, we are committed to nurturing meaningful partnerships and connections that contribute to an environment of prosperity and well-being for all generations to come. This acknowledgement is made on the Treaty 20 land and the territory of the Michisawig and Nishinawig, and within the traditional lands of the Michisawig and Chipewa nations, collectively known as the Williams Treaty First Nations. Further, our gratitude is extended to the nations of Alderville, Bozalay, Curve Lake, Georgina Island, Hiawatha, Rama, and Skugog Island. Thank you. I'll now ask for a motion to adopt the agenda, please, and move by councillor Watson, second by councillor Lambshead. All in favor? Thank you. Does any councillor have a declaration of the culinary interest in the agenda items? If so, please disclose your interest in the general nature of... I see nothing online or in the chamber. Thank you. And we have our minutes from our October 1st meeting. A mover for those, councillor Martin and councillor Burt. All in favor? Thank you. So we'll move right into our first presentation, and welcome MPP Smith to the podium here to speak on the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund. Welcome, MPP Smith.
Thank you, Warden Clark, I appreciate that. It's been a while since I've been here. It's been a busy summer. It's been a busy summer for all of you, as well as some of the things that have happened here across the province. So I'll give a quick update before I get into the OSIF funding side of it. I know that the issue with the United States around trade and tariffs is still in the forefront for a lot of people. We hear about it a lot in our office. A lot of emails come in, we do get a lot of phone calls on it. What I can say is that although there is some significant uncertainty for business, Ontario is still seeing foreign investment coming in. About $42 billion of foreign investment this past year. So other countries other than the United States are still looking for ways that they can work with Ontario and expand into our markets as well as us expanding into their markets. Interprovincial trade is something that we have been working on, breaking down those barriers so that we have more free trade going between provinces. It has created some challenges, we'll freely admit that. But most recently, one of the biggest benefits for us has been the free movement of labour. We have a lot of projects in Ontario we're trying to get built, and it requires a lot of skilled labour. At the moment, we're short of about 325,000 people in skilled labours. So what this does is it opens up for us the opportunity for individuals who have their ticket in another province to be able to practice in Ontario on a project-by-project basis. And I'll give a couple of prime examples. If I look at Thunder Bay with the Bombardier plant that's there. Bombardier has multiple plants. They have staff that do a fantastic job in those various locations. Previously, if they had staff who was in Montreal, who was the lead for building one of those trains or those train cars, when that production went to Thunder Bay, that individual from Montreal, with all their experience on the project and their knowledge, actually wasn't able to work in Ontario. And what this does is it opens up that opportunity, so we have that continuity. Likewise, when a project is being led in Thunder Bay and the finishing parts of it are being done in Montreal, those workers who are key to it were not able to go to Montreal to complete the project. So it meant delays in all of those projects. And what this change means is that those labours can freely move then with the project from one province to another. Same thing happens on building with a lot of the large, very large developers. Elastom is a perfect example of it. If they have just completed a project in downtown Toronto, and they are looking at doing a similar project in Vancouver, the Ontario workers who have the experience in it, who have the knowledge in it, were not able to go to Vancouver to complete it. This changes it so that there is a free flow of labour moving across the provinces that way. And what we think that'll do is it'll spur on some of that development. It'll make those timelines and get things done in a more timely fashion. And when we're looking at projects that are things that could be expedited to another community or to another jurisdiction, every time you slow down one of those projects because of those red tape barriers, it makes you less competitive on the world market. We know that with things like SMRs, the small modular reactors, there's a few of them that are going to be built in Darlington. As you're driving down the 401 just outside of Bonneville, and you look on your left-hand side if you're heading into Toronto, you see a mound of dirt on the 401, and that's because they've excavated down to the bedrock to put the SMRs there. These will be the first small modular reactors connected to the grid in the entire world when they're completed. And that technology, Ontario is one of the intellectual property holders on a lot of the technology for it. So as we export that technology to other countries, we'll be able to take our own technicians, our well-trained individuals, and have that entire supply chain across Canada so that we can do that work and export that technology into other jurisdictions. Poland in particular is very interested in it. It looks like they're going to be purchasing 100 of these to be placed across Poland. That's a significant impact on the Canadian economy and the Ontario economy. And if we didn't allow for that free flow of those highly skilled individuals moving from one province to another, we wouldn't be able to get those things done in a timely fashion. So I think this is something that's actually very good for the entire province. And we will see some of the benefits here in this region because we have BWXT, we have Rolls-Royce, we have Westinghouse. We're all part of the supply chain for the nuclear industry. So just a quick update on some of those things. For those... Today I'm Oprah. You, Jack, you, Jack, you, Jack. Yeah. The funding, so it's the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund. It's usually funding that comes to municipalities. There's about 426 of the 444 municipalities that receive funding this way. It's formula-based. We take a look at what your infrastructure needs are, what your population is, what the ability is for you to be able to cover some of those costs. And all of that factors in to the formula on it. I can't give you a defined definition of what the formula is because it does vary a little bit. We take into account some of the more remote areas and make accommodations for that. So when we look at it, this year we decided that we were going to increase the floor. Last year, the floor was set at $100,000. So if you were a smaller municipality that didn't hit some of those criteria, we didn't want to disadvantage you. And those municipalities received $100,000. This year, we recognized that some of the smaller municipalities have a little bit more constraints put on them. So the floor had been raised to 125,000, which is good news for North Corther, Trent Lakes, and Duro Dummer because those three municipalities will be receiving $125,000 in OSIF funding. Havlock Belmont Bethune? It's kind of funny when we're talking about municipalities. When I talk about Havlock now, and I'm going to say Havlock is a big municipality. I think the people of Havlock would disagree with us. They would receive $144,000 this year in that funding. Salwen, which is definitely the biggest of the small communities in my part of Peterborough County, will be receiving $232,869. It is down a little bit, yes, but you're still receiving a sizable amount more than what your neighbours are. And for the county of Peterborough, it's $260,030. Now, I know that there are other townships here that are not part of my riding. That would be North Asfidel, Atanby South Monaghan, and Kevin Monaghan. Unfortunately, I'm not permitted to tell you what those numbers are. That'll be up to your Member of Provincial Parliament to reach out to you. But I think this is good news for Peterborough County. When we look at the divide of who's receiving what, how much the county is receiving, the total dollar value this year into Peterborough County is greater than it was last year. Now, I know that there's a little bit of a difference, a little bit of a breakdown for some, but overall, the county as a whole is receiving more funding this year from it. Happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Okay, thank you for coming today, MPP Smith. And I'll open it up for questions. I see the Deputy Warden. Please go ahead.
Thank you through your warden. You know what my question is before I ask it because I've been asking it for months and months, years actually. Where's our OP?
So, depending on how you look at it. It was submitted, then was asked to be brought back to do a review on it after the provincial policy statement changed. That was then resubmitted. There was some conversation that went back and forth between ministry officials and staff at the county. The final version of it did get into the ministry back in May of this year. Because there were some smaller iterations and some adjustments that needed to be made to it, the final version came in May. It was posted on the environmental, or the ERO for comment. The posting ended this summer, and there were a couple of minor comments that were made on it that ministry staff are in the process of going through. You're one of about 80 official plans that are still going through that process. I don't have a timeline for when it will be completed and handed back to you. However, the biggest photos have been complete now. It has gone through the ERO process. Comments were made on it, and the officials are in the process of reviewing those comments to make a final recommendation up to the minister. So I'm hopeful that it will be relatively quick in government terms. I would be surprised if we're looking much past Christmas for some kind of a response back on it.
Okay, well, thank you very much for all your doing. Thank you for your presentation. Well, with bated breath. So I'm just going to turn it over to our CAO, and then I have councillor Martin and councillor Black.
Thank you, and through you, just timing-wise, county staff met with ministry staff yesterday, Ian Mudd and myself, and we are anticipating a draft decision letter within the next weeks to month timeframe approximately, at which time we will bring a report to county council with that information. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Martin.
Yeah, okay, through you. Thank you, Dave. This is OCIF. It's great news. It's a good start, let's put it that way. And we have several projects planned for this year, so we will be reaching out to maybe top it up a little bit, so, thank you.
You're welcome. And I will say this, I've had other officials from other townships reach out to me jealous about the amount of money that you received this summer for your water and wastewater. So, I'll just send them your...
Councillor Black.
Thank you through your warden. Thanks for the presentation, Dave. As one of the townships that's getting less, just questioning around the formula. Salwen, with our Lakefield South initiative, is going to have huge infrastructure needs moving forward as that project develops out. So I'm just wondering how the formula works when you said the look at rural municipalities a little bit differently now, and, you know, our built-up area, there's going to be a huge cost down the road. How we ended up with less when knowing that over the next 10, 15 years, we're going to have huge costs to build out that development in the township? So I know you can't say too much about the formula, but can you give us an idea why we got less this year?
Sure. So when we take a look at where infrastructure needs are and what there are for others, one of the things that has been pulled out of the formula has been the water and wastewater portion of it because we do have funds specifically for water and wastewater. The Housing Enabling Building Fund, just as an example, we've had two rounds of that. It would not be inconceivable to see another round of that coming before the spring session to make sure that municipalities who need to start construction on that have the ability of doing it in the next construction period. We just had some of that funding go out. You're in position now with Lakefield South's moving along where you're actually going to be able to demonstrate a need. Prior to Lakefield South being almost shovel-ready, you weren't in a position where you were going to be at capacity until some decisions had been made. So we were looking at those municipalities then that are further along in the process who have a more immediate need for that water and wastewater to be dealt with. You're at that point yet. You're getting very close to it. So you will score higher on the next round of Housing Enabling Water Fund.
And you just to follow up, yeah, there's no doubt we're at capacity with the new zoning for that project. Certainly for wastewater, we are absolutely. We can only provide water, additional water. Yeah, so thank you.
Right, thank you. Just a couple of things that increased from the 100 to the 125 as the base. Is that permanent or is that just this year?
That's this year, but what we've decided to do, what we have done on this is we have taken a look at what the costs are for everyone on a moving-forward basis. So I do not envision a time where it's going to be dropped back down, but I could very well see in the near future where that basement number actually does increase. I think you're going to see the overall OSIF funding continue to increase as well as a result of what the costs are to maintain things. Well, we recognize that the cost of laying a road today is significantly higher than it was even five years ago. Covid increased the cost of a lot of things, and it did change a lot of the planning that we're doing at the provincial level. We've had to make adjustments for it. The unfortunate part of how government works is that you can't always be proactive. You tend to be much more reactive. So there is a time delay once we see that increase in costs before we can get the mechanism of government to make the adjustments to it. I heard some people talking about Treasury Board here just a few moments ago, and it's not... I've said this before with myself, coming from private industry, getting into politics, we would review something. It might take us six weeks. We make a decision and we move forward with it. In government, it is a much, much longer process for it, and it seems like it's elephant mating. There's a lot of noise and it takes two years to get results. That tends to be how things work at the government level. Our budget process, we're actually doing budget consultations starting next week. The budget would come out at the end of March. So we're realistically four to six months in planning for it, and we really can't make wholesale changes to the budget that was introduced back in the spring. It typically means it's two budget cycles that, when you see a change in the environment, before government can actually react to make that change on the dollar side.
Thank you. And just to follow up, I know that the Premier wants to be the leader, certainly in energy for the world, not just Canada. With these small modular reactors that are going in, and the first, and you mentioned the three companies that are deeply involved, BWXT, Rolls-Royce, and Westinghouse. Do you see a chance for those industries here to expand? And what is the role that the province will in helping those expand? We talk about economic development in the county, in the city. What's good for one is good for both. How can we give them support to make this happen? We've, instead of trying to attract new, we'll certainly keep that up. But I think seeing this potential here, this to me is something that could benefit everyone and come to fruition far easier.
I think we're well-positioned in the, all we're fortunate was the greater Peterborough area. It's not just the city, it's also out into the county as well. We have three major companies dealing with the nuclear industry. We have a university that has some research on that as well. And we have some companion companies that are doing some of the environmental cleanup side of it that are all coming together. And I think that we've got a lot of the makings to be that centre of excellence on nuclear technology here. And I think that as long as all levels of government are prepared to do what they need to do to incentivize these companies to continue growing here and give them the opportunities to grow, I think that we have a great chance to become that core centre. When you look at Waterloo, just as an example, in the 70s, Waterloo was not the centre for technology. They made a decision, the entire region made a decision in the 80s to try and attract companies that way. And they brought in some of the technology companies. Some of the small startups had the opportunity to grow. They did all of that networking, and they have become the de facto Silicon Valley of Canada. I think that we're well-positioned on the nuclear side. There still is a lot of misinformation and misunderstanding of what nuclear is and what the hazards and the risks are. And I'll point out one in particular, and that is BWXT with the fuel cells. The Kandy reactor uses natural uranium. It does not use enriched uranium. So the uranium that is coming to the area to be put into those fuel cells is what is exactly mined out of the ground. There was no enhancement done to it. So it poses no risk than it would in the ground itself. And then when it goes into the Kandy reactor, it is going through a process, yes. It does emit radiation, but when it reaches 92% of its radioactivity, that's when it's considered spent. So what comes back out of the Kandy reactor is actually less radioactive than what is taken out of the ground. It is, the Kandy reactor is the safest of the nuclear reactors, the nuclear generation process. And we have that intellectual property here. We have that intelligence here. We have the wherewithal for it. And the great part about the companies that we have is they're not trying to poach employees from each other. They are working together on this, and they're able to attract new people into the area because they are working together. I think it puts us in a great position. So if I could make the request that when one of those companies comes forward, we do what we can possibly do to make it as easy as possible for them to have the expansion. Sometimes, some of our processes get weaponized by those who may not like a technology or might not like an industry. And we have to avoid the noise and listen to the message because there would be a lot of noise, but the message may be very different. And the message is what's more important than the noise.
Thank you. All right, councillor Whelan.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. Thank you very much for $125,000. We know exactly where we're going to use it. But my reason for going on here, my friends from Asfidel Norwood, I guess, are too polite. But they have hundreds of homes that are completely through the planning process and everything. And they're short on their sewage supply, been turned down the last two times. Is there anything county council can do to help them get that through? Is that effective at all in making the decision for this?
I think that one of the things the county council could do is demonstrate that this is the growth area for it. And if you were to, as part of their application, if county council came forward and said that all of the municipalities support this application, it would give it a little bit more strength. What we have, we have a lot of municipalities that end up competing against each other for that same dollar. And it becomes a difficult challenge. Just as an example, the last round of the Housing Enabling Water Fund was just over a billion dollars, and we had around $7 billion worth of requests for it. So we don't want to be in a position where neighbouring municipalities are competing against each other for it. So if county council would make a decision to prioritize within the county where they think the growth is most likely to happen and where it is in most convincing the other municipalities in the county to perhaps wait until the next round and throwing the support behind another municipality at a different round and not have two municipalities in this town or this county compete against each other. It makes it a little bit easier for us because we now know then where the priority actually exists for the bigger region. As I said, we had almost seven times, just slightly more than seven times, the request for money than what we actually had. And we have to then take a look at who is in most dire need, what is the level of support in the region for it. And it causes a little bit of concern when you're pitting one neighbouring municipality against another neighbouring municipality. Now, having said that, there is likely to be some legislation introduced in the very near future that would allow easier access to some of the more creative water and wastewater systems, and the modular wastewater systems, which then makes it easier to do some of that expansion because you're not looking at a $35 million expansion. You could be looking at a $2 or $3 million expansion and being able to add on multiple times to it.
Thanks very much for the answer, Dave.
I'm seeking motion now. Moved by Deputy Warden Black and Deputy Warden Sennis, sorry, and councillor Black. All in favor? Thank you. Just, Dave, please come more sooner than later again, if only to give us an update as you did here today. I think there's lots of questions around the table, and we appreciate that. But definitely come with checks, so thank you. All right, moving on to our next presenters. Terry Reeves, consultant for the Ontario Pragmities Action Program. And accompanying him is Tom Unroy. Is that how I pronounce your name, Tom?
Good talk.
I'm going to kick a trick. How is it? Unroy, Director of Community Director of Community Conservation, the Corte Land Trust, as well as joining Terry. So I'd just like to remind everyone that there is a staff report coming about the Fragmities program. So we'll hold our questions until that. This is just the presentation that Terry's going to go through with us. Thank you.
Great, and thank you, Warden Clark, and everyone for the invite today and for a couple minutes on the agenda. And I promised Jenna not to tromp all over her staff reports. So, and there's a lot of slides and thank you, Mayor Watson, for at least indicating you tried to read through it. But I'm not going to force you to. But this is just a quick update from a presentation I gave last year in November, just about the Ontario Fragmities Action Program and what's happening this year and what's we're hoping to happen next year. So, next slide. So I hopefully don't have to remind you, this is everywhere in the county. It's on every road, it's in every stormwater pond, it's in lots of our parks. It's a major economic problem for most municipalities in the province, especially in the south and southwest and certainly around here. And it's a, it's a real challenge for a whole bunch of reasons, which I'll go into right now, next slide. It's got economic impacts, it's tremendously expensive. The amount of money managing this for public safety, for ecological reasons, for keeping infrastructure intact is significant. And that's why the program was designed and is being implemented across the province and in this area. So, next slide. We know that it impacts our water fence, something near and dear to our hearts in this area. Kind of low property values, it's a problem for sightlines on roads, can cause a problem for drainage and impacts a whole bunch of recreational values for our natural areas. Next slide. It's an ecological nightmare. It excludes everything from living on our beautiful natural areas, alters water flow and impacts biodiversity. So if you're not getting the picture, it's undesirable and we need to do something about it in a productive way. Next slide. It's a major hazard. This is from Windsor area in the fall, so it can impact rail infrastructure. This is a massive stand of fragmities that caught on fire in the spring. We've had our own impacts with fire in this area. And these large stands left unattended can be, end up being a major fire hazard, especially in a drought year like this year. And speaking of drought, my little jaunt to Ottawa in August where everything, everything was brown, fragmities was green and lovely and thriving. So it's a real monster of a plant. Next slide. So we're trying to manage this in a way that's, it's a daunting problem, but we're trying to manage it by managing the spread of it and controlling the spread and preventing the spread, especially in the north and in areas, lots of the areas of the county aren't yet infested. And the more we can do to not spread it is great. That's why I brought along a little gift, which is the clean equipment protocol for each of your councils and your staff, your municipal government, so that you can do what you can when you're moving equipment around, because it's, we can be our own worst enemies. And we're trying to coordinate the response because it's an expensive and daunting problem and we just can't do everything everywhere all the time. So doing it together is a way that we're going to be able to make a difference. So, next slide. So we're trying to do this through the OPA program, Ontario Fragmities Action, which is to work with municipalities, conservation groups, conservation authorities, community groups and First Nations to tackle this problem in a coordinated manner. We know that fragmities doesn't observe fence lines. So often it goes from our roadsides into, into natural areas that are adjacent to it. And the more we can coordinate that and get at the whole picture, the more effective we'll all be. Next slide. This is just a long point example down in Norfolk County where they've done, not only, they've got a tremendously coordinated program across the whole county, but it started with a significant control effort through the coastal wetlands there. Thousands of hectares of a giant monoculture, it was unbelievable. And through a dedicated, multi-year, very sophisticated approach, there was a demonstration that it can actually make a difference. So this is kind of the inspiration for communal and community work. Next slide. So the province, through M and R, dedicated some funding. We're in year two of three, so there was some money dedicated through Minister Smith to specifically target this coordinated work that's happening through communities across the province. I'll say that this is also a matter of an interministerial group, which involves OMAF, MTO, who are a real culprit, are stakeholder, and also Ministry of Environment, Conservation of Parks, because this is a all-of-government problem. It's the money and the programming is funneled through M and R. But it's a problem that's obviously on the radar of our agricultural producers, the folks that run our infrastructure, like roads, especially roads and parks and other natural areas and the pesticide folks at MECP who are involved in the management side. So we're using this funding to specifically target regional collaboration. So that's the focus of the program. So, and I'll talk a little bit about the Fragmities management areas in just a minute. Next slide. So this year was pretty exciting. We had hundreds of communities that were funded through the program. It's a matched funding, so the money that goes out is all matched through staff, in-kind volunteer work. So we were able to do a lot of good work on the ground. I say we, it was all through partners, including yourselves. Very exciting. Most of the Williams Treaty groups are all doing frag work, by the way, I should mention. So that's very exciting and as are a number of local groups. And Tom is going to talk a little bit about what's coming up in the area in just a minute. Next slide. Yeah, this is all available through the website, so it's just to show that it's happening across the province from the Grand Council Treaty III in the Canora in the north to the, tons of work going on in the southwest, of course, and all through, and all through this region as well. Next slide. It's in the news. I mean, people recognize this stuff, they know it's a problem. It's quite prominent in our, in our communities. And so it's, it's not only an economic and social problem, but it's really top of mind for so many people across the province and worthy of our attention. Next slide. So what are we to do about it? So after last year, the county in its wisdom applied and got some funding for some work. So the maps, Jenna and her team mapped the road, sorry, my, I'm already into a presentation. There's a number of good things that happened that you'll hear all about. This is just the intro, this is the bump, because it's going to be really good. So that's terrific. Jenna will talk a little bit more about that, but we're pleased that that happened in our area. I live in the area, have a property in the metropolis of Havlock, Belmont-Massun. The GHBMA. And there's applications coming up for the following year. And that, Tom and I are here to talk about what that could look like for the counties for some work going forward. And hopefully to engage the local municipalities as well. Because I know you've all got parks, roadways, stormwater and other issues that hopefully can be fed into this program. So, next slide. So Fragmities Management Areas, as I said, it's getting people together that have common or intersecting interests. That's conservation groups and municipal government, of course. And to use some of the guidance that we've got through this regional guidebook, which is like, how do you get together, how do you make it all work best? A lot of resources and thought has been put into this by a lot of people. They're expert in the field. And so following this guidance, that's where we're going to dedicate most of the funding from the program this year. And we'd like Peterborough County to be in on that. Because we all live here and why not? We should get a piece of the pie and it is a problem locally. So, next slide. Great, Tom didn't think I could do it. But that's all I had to say. We're going to talk, Tom wants to talk to you about the quarter's efforts here and how we hope to be able to continue to engage the county and the lower-tier municipalities here in the larger sort of effort to manage Fragmities. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just a quick question for anyone that happens to be watching the, the program today. Where should the council today, where should people get this if they're interested?
There's the information on the program, including the clean equipment protocols, all available through the Ontario Fragmities Action website, ontariofragmitiesaction.ca. And yeah, you can get all of the information through the website there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Welcome, Tom, here to the podium.
Great. Thanks, thanks, Terry. Before I get into the progress that the Corte Fragmities Management Working Group is making, just wanted to pick up on something that Terry said, which is, you know, that Fragmities is a big problem, that it's in, you know, all our roads and, you know, you guys seen it all over the place. And I've been doing invasive species management for about ten years. So I've experienced and I've had my own ups and downs with belief in the process of doing invasive plant management. But over the weekend, I was just in Quebec, in the eastern townships. And it is truly everywhere in the eastern townships, in Fragmities and in every backyard, in every ditch, in every natural area and every recreational area. It is truly beyond control. And I came back to Kent County where I live and realized we actually have a chance here. Like, we can actually put in effort and make an impact that will support nature and support our recreational infrastructure in areas and support people. And so I believe at the time, really is now in this region, partially because of the reality of Fragmities on our landscape, but also because of the Fragmities Action Fund that is available right now. We can access it and we can use it to make a difference. It's more money than invasive species management normally gets. So it's really a prime time and the county can really be a leader in this work. Of course, that involves a lot of convening and a lot of collaboration. There's no point in everybody doing little bits of this separately. We need to do it together and we need to take a coordinated approach. And so that's where I'm stepping in to dedicate my time to doing that convening and that coordination with land managers across the region. These are the people that actually get the work done on the ground and have the budgets or the knowledge or the wherewithal to manage their land and remove Fragmities from it. So we've convened our first Fragmities Management Working Group. We had twelve land managers and contractors who deal with Fragmities at the first meetings. Those are roads departments, infrastructure, parks, protected areas like Corte Land Trust and conservation areas, as well as some contractors who make their living spraying this stuff. Our area of focus is Peterborough County and City of Corte Lakes. I really like the idea of forcing a little bit of collaboration between neighboring counties. And I think there's a lot of opportunity to work together and avoid duplication in our Fragmities approach. I've noticed that about, you know, in sort of going through all of the organizations that are required to actually take a collaborative approach here, it's about thirty organizations. So that includes the First Nations, hydro, land managers, organizations like that. And I think we can get them all at the table. I do think we, it's possible. I'll also just say that this is work that's being convened by Corte Land Trust. So folks here have maybe heard about Corte Land Trust. But if you don't step inside the land trust sector and into the broader province very often, you might not know that Corte Land Trust is a leader in the land trust sector in Canada. And that our primary done better is creating nature reserves in our community. A part of the leadership that we're taking in, in conservation is to step into this sort of convening role of jobs that need multiple partners to come together and take on work that benefits nature and people in the region. So this is, this is part of Corte Land Trust's job, but it's really not about creating nature reserves. It's about showing that leadership in the region to support nature and people. Next slide. So the goals of the Corte Fragmities Management Working Group. The first one is to access funding to increase control. I really love getting things done and I really believe in the power of getting things done together as creating its own momentum and getting people interested in doing more. So right away, we want to try to get more funding to increase the amount of control that's happening in the region and to get the folks who I know want to do this work to just take the first step. So talking with some land managers on the phone before our first meeting, I realized a lot of people, this is something they've wanted to do off the side of their desk for a while, just haven't gone around to. So we're going to nudge them and get that desire to start control kick-started. We're also going to share data to reduce duplication and prioritize sites, because we probably can't control it all. But if we share our data, then we can see where the Fragmities is, just get after it. And address capacity gaps around things like planning and contractor services. So currently, some of the more major Fragmities infestations require contractors from southwestern Ontario to come all the way up here. Let's make some jobs for folks in the region who can tackle this here. Excellent. Example of collaboration so far, I won't steal Jenna's thunder, but she did do a great job of monitoring for Fragmities along the county roads. And so that's all the lines in red. And I heard this and I said, all right, let's keep this momentum going. I'm going to find some money and we're going to do monitoring of Fragmities along other roadsides that aren't addressed by those county roads. So we've been through all the lower-tier municipalities. I think my monitoring crew is out today. And we've driven all of the roads in the Peterborough County lower-tier municipalities that intersect with provincially significant wetlands, so the most important natural areas, and monitored for Fragmities there as a first approach to monitoring your roadsides. We've also helped City of Corte Lakes by doing two of their operating units, according to their road management department. So the southern ones in orange on the left side of that there. So together, we did fifteen hundred kilometers of monitoring for Fragmities, put us in a great position to act next year. Excellent. There's lots of roads, but we can do it. We're going to do it next year. That's what the funding's for. We've set ourselves up, we've got a stage, now we're going to go on to the next stage, next year. Excellent. So Peterborough County's role, I really am impressed by the leadership that Jenna's taken in Noxious Weeds Management in general, but also on Fragmities by applying to this fund. There's fifty-two-hundred thousand dollars available for this work, for Fragmities Management Areas next year. So I encourage the county to apply for more work and to continue doing leadership in Fragmities and to join the Corte Fragmities Working Group sort of formally, if that is a thing that is possible. And that I really see, and Terry and I just sort of hatched a plan for doing a roadshow for the, for the lower-tier municipalities and getting in front of your councils and departments to say, okay, let's all get at this together, what can we do next year? So I encourage you to wait for us and encourage your staff to live with this opportunity. Next slide. Thanks very much. And, oh, actually, sorry, I wanted to do this a little quick because Mr. Smith was able to do this earlier. I hope to return and say, and you get Fragmities money, and you get Fragmities money, and you get Fragmities.
Thank you. And I just want to point out, you did mention that forced cooperation with City of Corte Lakes. I want to assure you that Peterborough County is always good neighbors and we've worked on many, many projects, so it will not be a forced cooperation, Tom. So, thank you.
Thanks for that, Terry.
I think we'll just hold the questions off, as I said, until Jenna's had time and maybe if you'll stay and possibly answer questions at that time. So just a motion, I'll look on screen. I don't think I've got any motions on screen yet. So moved by councillor Graham and second by councillor Armstrong. All in favor? Thank you. And that's just receiving the presentation from Terry and Tom. Now, consent items, there is no request to pull anything unless I see something in the chamber online. I see none, so then just a motion to, to receive all the consent items on the agenda. Councillor Wilford, councillor Webb, all in favor? Thank you. And we're going to turn it over to Kerry, pull, I just, I think a rearrangement of how our presentation's the order.
We're going to deal with item nine B prior to item nine A.
So we'll now, and Jen Stouffer is online. There she is. Welcome, Jen. And we're starting off with nine B regarding our budget pressures.
Thank you, Warden Clark, and thank you to council for indulging me to do this, this item first. I have another timed appointment that I need to get to, so I might not be able to stay to the end of the council meeting. But certainly wanted to talk about the budget first. So staff have been working on the 2026 budget for months. The book is almost ready and will be distributed to council probably by Friday. Our only exception to getting it finished is the few decisions that we have before you today. And so just to quickly run through the contents of the report, our asset management plan is now complete. Staff have received the final draft late last week for review and we anticipate that coming to council prior to the budget being approved. For full transparency, the recommendation of the consultant is to increase our dedicated infrastructure levy to three percent from our current two-point-five percent. So council could direct staff to make that change for the 2026 budget. We are recommending that we wait to implement that recommendation for 2027, as we're hoping to do, or not hoping, we will be doing. As we're hoping to do, or not hoping, we will be doing uh a full, long-term financial plan that considers all of our pressures. Uh, both operating and capital uh out into the future, and so. Uh, I believe it would be better for council to make an informed decision on how to proceed with the asset management plan. Uh, once you have that understanding of the bigger picture. Uh, the other items in the report, uh, as you know, the curbside pickup for non-eligible sources is being discontinued at the end of this year. The budgeted cost for that service was six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Uh, so the finance committee is recommending that we remove half of that, or three hundred and thirteen thousand from the budget to reduce the tax levy. And put the remaining half into a waste management reserve for future use. Uh, the county has historically funded half of the city of Peterborough's diversity, equity and inclusivity program. And in exchange, the county had access to their resources. Uh, the county has not taken advantage of this for the past few years. Uh, and hasn't, and we have instead been building our own DEI program in-house. So the recommendation of the finance committee is that we notify the. Uh, city that we will no longer be you are sharing in this cost with them. Uh, the results of that would be to reduce the tax levy by ninety thousand one hundred and thirty. Health is requesting an increase in their budget of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. However, they have provided the county with a mitigation payment of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twelve dollars. So the finance committee is recommending that the the mitigation payment that we're receiving. That those funds be transferred to reserved, offset future potential increases. Rather than being utilized to fund the increase for twenty twenty-six. Um, and so on the assumption that council approves all the recommendations of the finance committee. Uh, staff will be presenting council with a five point four four percent tax levy increase in total. And that's comprised of one point three five percent for county operations, which is below uh inflation at one point eight. Uh, the dedicated infrastructure levy, of course, remaining at two point five percent. And then the shared services and agency budget increases one point five nine, so the three of those. Make up the total of the five point four four percent. Uh, and with that, uh, open to any questions.
And looking for uh questions, I see Counselor Taylor.
Okay, so thank you, Warden Clark. Uh, thank you, Jennifer. I don't know whether this question is directed at you or the finance committee. Who would like to speak to it, but I'd like, I'd like someone to help me understand why we would consider. Continuing to take over three hundred thousand dollars out of our residents' pockets for services we're no longer providing. I assume that when we discontinued this um curbside pickup. That the savings for that would be passed on to the residents in its entirety. Could someone help me understand what's the rationale for that recommendation?
Uh, I can, I can take a stab at that on behalf of the finance committee, uh, since I don't see any of their their hands up. Um, the the rationale was that there's still, I think, some uncertainty about whether or not. This program is going to continue to be needed to be picked up by the individual businesses. Um, I think there's been a lot of pushback on that. Uh, and so I believe that that the committee's thought was, let's leave some of that money in a reserve just in case. Uh, there's a change in direction as to how curbside pickup's going to be picked up for non-eligible sources.
Uh, fair enough, I don't agree with that, but thank you.
Other questions? Okay, I don't see any further questions. Um, therefore, could um I entertain a motion here to support? Yes, uh, Counselor Black, I'm looking online. Uh, for the motion for the three bullet points that are listed. Anyone online, anyone else too? Yes, Counselor Willen, all in favor? Okay, I want to make sure hands. Okay, that is moved, thank you. All right, now we'll go to nine A and still presenting, Jen, please go ahead.
Thank you, Warden Clark. Uh, so the Affordable Housing Financial Incentive Program. Um, the county has recently had a few not-for-profit organizations making requests for affordable housing support. In light of that, I did some research to determine what other municipalities across the province are doing to financially support affordable housing. Uh, the report you have before you and the attached appendix are really intended to be a true draft uh to generate conversation and discussion. About uh what this council is willing to or not willing to support um in in support of affordable housing. So the report speaks to waiving of county fees, offering grants and offering loans. We're asking that you consider those thoughts. Uh, and provide me with any comments or concerns you might have about the draft program by the end of the month. Uh, the finance committee will then review the comments, amend the program as necessary. And make recommendations on the finer details of the program. So for example, uh, if council chooses to proceed with the grant. The finance committee is going to need to think about uh how we'll fund and establish a reserve. If there'll be maximum draws that any one project might receive. Uh, similarly, if council wishes to offer loans, we're going to going to need to consider. Uh, what level of debt we're willing to take on for any one project. Or uh for the program as a whole. So, once again, this is really just a draft. It's intended to generate conversation. Uh, and once we understand the level of financial support council's willing to consider. We will come back uh prior to December fifth with a more fulsome program for you to review and consider again. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So opening up up to questions, so Jen, basically, if anyone has any thoughts, any uh. Certainly opinions on this to uh reach out and email you with that. Um, therefore, you can take that then to the finance committee to come back again. Is that the process we're looking at?
Correct.
Okay, uh, Counselor Graham.
Uh, through you, Warden. Uh, not really uh. Um, structural feedback, I guess, but just a question, I think it might be helpful or or maybe uh easier to interpret. About understanding what the implications of the various different opportunities that we're trying to incentivize from affordable housing, what it would mean for an application. Um, like, are we are we layering these fee exemptions with grants, with loans, all all simultaneously on one project? Or is the idea to have flexibility for various builders in the affordable space to have access to a preferred option? But I think it's important that we, from a fiscal standpoint, know. What we're really getting into from a cost standpoint on a project-to-project basis, rather than, you know, sort of. I think, like you said, this is just a draft, so we're just understanding some of the principles and the tools at play, but I think. We really need to understand what the fiscal implications are and what the capacity is within those tools. And what it could mean if they're going to accomplish, you know, what we're intending to with the uh with the uh report and with the um movements that we're making.
So through the warden, I couldn't agree more, Counselor Graham. Um, I think those are all valid points and that's that's the sort of information that I want back from council so that we can have that discussion. I've left it very open right now, um, that yes, one application could apply for all of it. Um, I have seen in in different versions of this across the province. Some allow only one, only allow a grant, but you can't have a grant and a loan. Some are saying you can have a grant, but there's a maximum to what your grant could look like. There's a maximum loan we'd willing to be entertained. And so looking really for um some feedback from council about. Are we willing to entertain grants? Uh, and then if we have that information, then we can look at what would a grant program actually look like? How much money are we willing to put into reserve? Um, what would we allow one project to draw on that reserve? Um, obviously, the financial, the financial implication to the county is going to be different than what. The benefit would be to the the um affordable housing provider. It depends on how big the project is. Um, and maybe that's something we want to think about. If the project is going to generate X number of homes. We're willing to do this. If it's less than X number of homes, we're willing to do that. So. Um, again, this is really to generate some conversation and some appetite. Uh, for what council's willing to consider or entertain in the benefits of such, and then we can expand or contract this program from there.
Further questions? Yes.
Just a follow-up, Warden, if I could?
Yes, please go ahead.
No, thanks for that, Jen. I think that sounds great. I mean, from my my bias is towards the loan and obviously of the waiving of fees. I'm not sure if we're referring to some of the fee exemptions as a grant. I mean, I mean, there's a lot of reasons why you might have to, so I can understand that. It's just a language thing. But, you know, from a from a standpoint, I do think that the fee exemptions, and I do think there should be potentially a secondary class for seniors-focused affordable housing versus just en masse. Um, you know, I think that there, with the demand and the demographic of the region that we uh represent. I think that there is just a a desperate need for this. I mean, we've been having lots of conversations in our municipality about housing providers. There's. I think there's a waking up in the seniors' housing industry about moving eastward, whereas traditionally, a lot of the growth was directed to the west of the GTA. Uh, we're starting to see that, and I think when we're sharing some of the demographic information with different providers and for opportunities in our township. There's a real like, aha, like, oh, oh my goodness, we've been sleeping on this, and this is the sort of information that we need to sort of be directing our strategic plans and where our growth is going to be. So I think it's at a unique and opportune time for the county to play a role in incentivizing that, but. Again, I would be more interested in in the the waiving or the exemptions of certain fees. And the loan program rather than getting into the what I consider somewhat bonusing territory when it comes to grants, but that's just my standpoint, but thank you for the report.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Graham. Uh, just a follow-up, Jen, uh, I know that uh. Some of the financial institutions, especially the Bank of Nova Scotia, is deep into housing and has made statements around this. Would you uh search out if any of these financial institutions have partnered with municipalities? And what that partnership looks like and what benefits? And the other one, uh, certainly following up from Counselor Graham, uh, secondary suites. I know that we all have those. Um, sometimes it's a financial burden for uh people to put that secondary suite in. So looking at that avenue as well. So I'm very excited about this, but I think there's a lot of discussion and sorting, uh, getting uh through the uh. Through the weeds here till we get what we can or can't do. So, all right, Counselor Lamson.
One other trail that we could follow here is when the county supports something, you might be eligible for more provincial help. As well as federal help. So I think when we, I mean, we just heard that from our our MPP that. You know, when we get together as a group and support something, I think they'll be looked at with a different eye at the provincial levels. These are good ideas. Thank you.
Fair enough. Counselor Taylor, and then counsel, no, just totally, yes, and then Counselor Black. That was flashing.
Thank you, Warden Clark. Jennifer, um, the one point here talks about homeownership. And and I'd like you to expand on that for me, please. Are you referring to freestanding, single detached homes built by a private citizen?
Uh, through through the warden, no, the program would only apply to a registered not-for-profit. So the registered not-for-profit organization would make the request to the county. They would have to be the owner of that property.
Okay, so when you say home ownership, are you talking about a condo unit or a, because there there are usually apartments that are rented?
Well, yeah, I mean, you get into situations like Habitat for Humanity, right, where they're building. And they might have a a um leased own type arrangement. Um, but ultimately, ultimately, we're looking at this only applying to registered not-for-profit organizations. Uh, as it's written right now, not to say that council couldn't decide to change it. Um, but the intent wasn't to have a private resident saying, I'm going to build a home and make it affordable.
No, no, thank you, and that's, and I didn't think so, but when I was reading the home ownership part, I was a little confused by it, but that would. Eliminate a Warden Clark question a minute ago about um secondary suites, that would do not be eligible.
Yeah, and to that uh point, Counselor Taylor, I wasn't aware, just not-for-profits we're looking at, but then I yeah. Certainly look at the property and Hadlock, Bellhole, Methune, um, that Peterborough Housing Corporation, but it's not. It is not registered as a not-for-profit and nothing has been done on that development, so. You know, maybe that's, I think there's a lot to talk about here. I think there's a lot to talk about. Counselor Black.
Thank you through, Warden. Uh, yeah, I just want to to support Counselor Lamson's comments around uh. Uh, funding of of not-for-profits and then the uh cooperation with other organizations. And that's very typical of those those types of projects. You need funding from multiple sources. You need a provincial grant, you need some, a secondary financing uh company or opportunity, the. Uh, Canada Mortgage and Housing Loaning Mortgage to a certain amount. And those organizations do have to find other ways to fund it, either through grants or other uh low-cost loans as well, so. I I think it's um, I think it's an important program for sure.
Thank you. Uh, to that point, I attended the Ontario Home Builders Association um last week. And um, the Eastern Ontario is set to grow by twelve point five percent faster than the GTA. And it's going to be migration, and that is young families coming out of the city because they don't want to. To raise children in apartment buildings. And so we're going to see a huge migration uh coming our way. Thank you. Uh, I don't see any further questions, so uh just to uh to receive the uh draft on this and then it'll be coming back. Counselor Lamson, I'll look online and see if I can uh get someone uh online that I haven't got. And Counselor Nelson, do you have your hand up? Okay, thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Yes.
Maybe I can do it after, if it's okay. Is this, is this information going to be sent to the uh the various townships, the economic development officers or the planning uh? People in each township, I think should be aware of this.
Uh, I would uh think, and Sheridan isn't, oh, thank you. I would think uh to the C A O meeting and then out to our townships. Counselor Taylor, would that be?
Yes, I'd like, I I think it's, I think it's valuable.
So just of that direction, first of all, uh, to the C A O's meeting and then uh. Do you want, once we drill down a bit more, Counselor Taylor, then, but go out to our C A O's now? What's your flavor on?
No, I I think it, as long as council agrees, as long as our local townships are advised of this. Uh, in its draft form, they they may have some input, they they feed back to the representatives, but it, this is. This is potentially a very, very good news for the for the region. And um, our staff, I know in our township, our staff might have some valuable advice as to what we could put into it.
Okay, yeah, we will certainly uh be, I will certainly be discussing this with the C A O's.
Good, good.
All right, I'll now uh turn it over to our missing in action at her desk to nap the podium.
Uh, thank you, and through you, um, this actual presentation is actually very timing um in in light of all the conversations we've already had today. Um, if council's aware, uh, August sixth, we had a strategic planning session of county council. Uh, where we really discussed strategically aligning Peterborough County's actions and activities into twenty twenty-six. Um, with the Prophets of Ontario to strategically align ourselves to open funding opportunities that. Um, like, very much like the ones that were spoken of this morning by M P P Smith. Um, so this presentation is really drawing that alignment um together from that presentation and then discussion that we did have. Next slide, please. Um, so we did learn at the session that healthcare and primary care access is a is a priority of the provincial government. Next slide, please. Um, our focus has really been on primary uh paramedic services expansion, healthcare advancement. And um our opportunities to align with our collaboration through. The uh Peterborough County's tool for waitlist strategies, as well as expanding community paramedicine clinics at clinic and. Virtual treatment options with provincial support. So we have been at the table with the Peterborough Ontario Health Team. Um, there is a provincial funding that is open right now, um, and we have been discussing as a group how best to support. Various healthcare strategies to address the primary care shortage in lots of the areas of of the county right now. That application, I believe, is going in next week. Um, and so the timing is is very good, and our community paramedics have been intimately involved in that process, as well as our physician recruitment. Um, efforts at the county. Um, last week, uh, Jen Stover and I were at the Morton Clinic, as well as the Schumong. Clinic to meet with physicians there, um, to understand some of the challenges um that are happening there, and we've been, we met with all the C A O's as well. Um, last week with our physician recruitment firm, and we've been uh putting together our strategy to move that forward. There is a report that will be coming to county council to give you the background information that we've compiled. Um, about specifically physician retirements and recruitment requirements over the next. A year to ten years, and uh it's looking substantial and and it's a big hill to climb. Um, next slide, please. Affordable housing, um, we just discussed this, so again, the province is still addressing. Affordable housing, um, we just discussed this. So again, the province is still addressing and need, the need for affordable housing and infrastructure alignment in the province. Um, we are looking at those funding opportunities, the. Uh, H E W S F funding that was announced, there is anticipated to be another stream. Um, we do know some of our partners were not, um, Asperl know it's successful in those funding and Selwyn, um, also needing funding. We did discuss as a group the need to really pull together a new growth management study, um, which we have started with Watson. And that will look at both residential and employment lands based on the new provincial targets and that information. Um, we are working on now and we'll be bringing that back um, to county council. It does strategically align with our new OP and some of the comments we're receiving back from the province in terms of needing. To uh, to make a few changes in that document. Um, next slide, please. Again, infrastructure investment, the province has um. Identified a, a large amount of infrastructure investment moving forward. Our need and collaboration is really advocating for rural funding. Um, what we have seen is a great divide between the amount of funding that is provided um, from the province from rural uh, to urban areas. Um, as you know, the ability to pay in urban areas is much uh, more densification and rural areas have a really. Hill to climb within cards, when it comes to our infrastructure. Um, and so we do need to look at. Approaches to infrastructure funding that are collaborative and that's part of what the study that we're doing right now is doing and that will be coming back to council as well. Next slide, please. You will hear uh, after this presentation, our economic development focus, which is a, again, a focus of the province. MPP Smith touched on the trade and tariffs as well as opportunities that they are looking at interprovincially. We have been doing a lot of work with the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus with respect to trade and tariffs and have a new economic development. Um, focused team on that group, um, and we will continue to support that, that work. Uh, we are also compiling response and, and strategy to the KUSMA negotiations that are forthcoming. Next slide, please. The province of Ontario, uh, economic development priorities, um, they have invested in the Rural Ontario Development Fund. Um, they have an Ontario with tax made credit and digital main street. So there's lots of programs that they're focusing on. We have applied for the Rural Ontario, uh, the ROD program as well. As the tariff impacted communities fund in partnership with other municipal partners and we're hopeful that we will receive that funding. Um, next slide, please. So our alignment opportunities. Um, again, the strategic alignment between economic development synergies of the county and the province and Rhonda will talk, talk a bit more about that. But also the skills development fund and better jobs Ontario funding. We partnered with Royalist College on the skills development fund application, um, that was not approved. Um, but we are looking at further. Opportunities, there is a meeting tomorrow at Trent University to talk about. Upskilling and micro credentialing opportunities, especially for those employment impacted companies. That we're seeing happen in the Peterborough region. A lot of those people do uh, live in Peterborough County, even if they. Work at city businesses. So we're looking at what, what we can do to help them. And the next slide, please. So our action plan is to continue to formalize those strategic partnerships with the province, the ministries, the townships to assess funding. Integrate their provincial KPIs into our own, um, engage in provincial consultations too. So continually bring to council. That uh, the ERO listings and our comments to them so that we can help guide provincial policy. Uh, develop shovel-ready projects. Um, we do know we have some large transportation master plan projects coming up. Um, in the future, we need to have them ready to go so that we can bounce, uh, jump on federal and provincial funding. And then promoting, promoting our regional assets, um, again. Our unique strengths in investment tourism attraction, uh, to draw opportunities. Next slide, please. Strategic recommendations, next slide. So again, integrating the KPIs, formalizing partnerships. Participate in provincial consultations, continually working with Queens Park and our MPPs and advocate for rural equity. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheridan, and questions for Sheridan. I think a lot of work that is going on, so appreciate that update. Thank you. So just a motion to receive support, I'll look online. I don't think I've got councillor Huntley. I don't think I've got you making a motion yet. Councillor Huntley and councillor Amyot, all in favor. Thank you. Okay, Rhonda, please welcome you to the podium and uh.
So, good morning, Warden and county council, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to present the Grow Economic Development Plan, where Grow stands for Growth, Resilience, Opportunity and Workforce. Those critical issues that are facing our businesses and our communities. And jump into the next slide. And so while we understood that county council had a desire to move fast and develop the county's first economic development plan, we really wanted to make sure that we were going to get it right. And so we took the time to meet and engage with local businesses and they were able to provide insights into what they need. Uh, we did that through tourism talks and local advantage events. We also spoke with each of the economic development officers and CAOs across the county. Um, to, we also included First Nations because they are a part of our EDO working group to see what they needed. And then we also spoke with our economic development partners, including Community Futures and the Chamber of Commerce. And those conversations really helped us, um, shape this plan's priorities and uh, and alignment with local realities and those opportunities. And so we didn't just design the activities, we actually jumped in and test drove them first. Um, throughout twenty twenty five. And so we looked at what worked, what didn't work. Um, and so that means that this grow plan that we've put in front of you is not theoretical, it is actually grounded in practice. And so today we're presenting a plan that reflects. The local input, regional collaboration, it, um, and it uses evidence-based strategies that address our local business concerns. Next slide. I included this word cloud, um, because it's a really quick snapshot of what we've been hearing from our businesses, what's keeping them at net, up at night. What they're worried about, but also interspersed in between, there are also those opportunities where they can see growth and opportunity. So it is clear that um. Trade policies and tariffs in the United States are still weighing heavily on local companies. Even if they're not trading in the US, they are still worried about what the um, implications are as they roll out. So next slide. So putting all of those pieces together, we needed to come together with guiding principles on how we were going to develop this plan. And so we wanted to make sure that it was community-focused, it was business-friendly. It was trying to build resiliency for both our businesses as well as our communities. It was developing people and skills and always supporting that entrepreneurial spirit. And you can see that a lot of that is based in how the provincial. Um, government is, is looking at economic development priorities. Next slide. So we have an aspiration, um, we want Peterborough County to foster a thriving and resilient rural economy. That supports local business, attracts sustainable investment while preserving its natural beauty. Together with our townships and partners, we create inclusive communities where people and businesses can thrive. Peterborough County listens to the needs of business and is committed to finding responsive solutions. And this aspiration is, um, is consistent and supports both the county's um, strategic plan as well as the province. Next slide. So growing that economy, how are we going to do that? And so we recognize with a small team and limited resources, we can't be all things to all people and we need to. Really focus in on what activities are going to generate the biggest return on investment. And so collectively, we agreed that first and foremost, we need to support our existing businesses first. Um, concentrating on growing those key sectors that are here and relevant. Supported by this council already, um, in the, in the fields of agriculture and agri-food, tourism and small-scale manufacturing. We also agreed that we can strengthen collaboration through community development. And when there is a challenge in one community, there is often that same challenge that goes against um, all of the communities. And so working together, um, to solve those community challenges is one way that we're able to improve and enhance the economy. We've also talked about enhancing our real estate portfolio and having more investment-ready sites, uh, when investors do come knocking. And then we also want to build an economic identity for how we talk about Peterborough County when we're talking to business about why they may want to, to relocate here. And why we're open for business. And so I'll talk about each of these pillars in more details. The next slide. So this is the biggest bulk of our work, it's supporting our existing business. This is where we meet and listen to our businesses. They tell us what's keeping them up at night and then we try to build responsive plans to meet those needs. So an example of this is through our local tourism talks and our local advantage sessions. Business after business reported that they were uncomfortable with marketing. Whether they were having their grandchild run their Facebook account or something like that, they just weren't comfortable doing it and they know that they needed to do more, but they weren't really sure what the next step should be. And so we hosted three different social media marketing um, workshops for these folks. We partnered with Community Futures, we brought in. Um, private sector development to help them test drive this work. And it wasn't just listen to a screen, we said, bring your laptop, bring your cell phone, we're going to walk you through, bring your problem. And at the end of the session where they were able to build their own reel and, and look at how they could post it. The feedback that we were getting from those is like, thank you, this is exactly what we needed. It was very basic, but it was responsive to where they were at that time. Um, and so we've also listed and we'll do continuous um, events like that throughout twenty twenty six is the plan. Um, continue to showcase the tools and resources that we have available on our website. Like our data center and our data center is this amazing tool that's interactive where businesses can go in. Plug information to see where their competitors are, or how much money is a typical competitor. Um, spending in marketing versus how they are doing this. Are they, are they on par? And this is really a tool to help them build out their business plan. Are they staying active and current um, with their competition? And so we'll do workshops like that on, how are they faring? It's also a good place for us to do one-on-one consultations with business who want to, who may find that they're falling far behind when they're looking at that data center. And so I think that's really a piece of, of how we're trying to support our businesses. We've listed a few output measures on what that could look like for you. We'll be able to report out on how many businesses engaged with us. During those economic development visits, how many round tables and local advantage programming that they took advantage of. We'll also report annually on the number of business satisfaction surveys on when they do those workshops, were they helpful? Um, as well as how many businesses are accessing those support programs such as Community Futures, the Rural Ontario Development and Eastern Ontario Development Funds. Next slide. Agriculture, agriculture and agri-food is identified as a key sector and the goal with any of our sectors is to try to support growth and encourage diversified revenue streams for the business. And so agriculture is complex, um, and there's many different organizations that we need to work with. Um, so we are also collaborating with City of Cortha Lakes to deliver the Cortha Choice Food Fresh, uh, Farm Fresh Program. As well as we're fa- finalizing the local aggregation and wholesale project. And so this was a red project back when it was red, um, that carried over and we're still working on it in collaboration with City of Cortha Lakes. And this was a, a chance for us to identify with ag producers. Are there capacity for them to be able to sell beyond farmers markets or farm gates? Are they able to aggregate their product to be able to land in retail stores, institutions, restaurants, caterers? And so um, there was a lot of training going on on both sides on how to sell to, to wholesalers as well as. Um, how wholesalers can work better uh, with local producers. And so that training was delivered. Of course, this year, our uh, yields were impacted by some of the, the weather conditions that we had with the drought. Um, but many of them are saying that this was very valuable. They do want to participate next year, so there still will be support going forward for that. We also want to elevate the status of jobs that are involved in the agriculture sector. We did this successfully with manufacturing many years ago and we are starting to see. More and more students signing up to go into manufacturing. We are now wanting to do that same thing for agriculture. And part of that starts with how our educators that are talking to students, what is their knowledge about all the various jobs and skill sets required in agriculture? And so next week we'll actually be hosting an event with PVNC and KPR. Um, educators, so civics and career teachers, guidance counselors, um, to talk about, hey, this is what agriculture actually looks like and these are the skills that we're going to need in the future. And so um, we want to make sure that we're. Hearing from farmers themselves, but we're also going to put them on a bus and tour an actual farm so they can see it in real life. Um, we also want to support on-farm diversified uses, um, and so just as tourism offerings, just whether they're those. Pumpkin fests or value-added agriculture like chi- wineries and cheesemaking, we want to make sure that there is support for businesses that want to pursue those avenues. And so our output measures are simple, but they're aiming to track how many agribusinesses we have visited in a year. The number of farms and restaurants participating in the Cortha Choice Farm Fresh programming and any new agritourism initiatives that are launched. Next slide. So tourism, it's uh, there is a distinction about what economic development does for tourism versus what maybe destination marketing does for tourism. They're often conflated, um, but I think it's really helpful for us to talk about what economic development is doing for tourism. And that's really working with those individual businesses to refine their experience that they're able to provide. So it's enhancing their business. So that visitors actually want to come and, and, and uh, visit them. And so an example, um, is cycling. Before we can get out there and, and Tracy and her team can do the come cycle in the Corthas, we need to make sure that the marketing team, um. Has the amenities. Do we have the amenities for cyclists? Are there repair kiosks along the way if cyclists need it? Are there bike racks to lock? Um, their bikes up? Do restaurants cater to cyclists? Do they have bike racks when cyclists want to go? Um, do we have trailhead parking available for cyclists so that they can park their car in a, in a safe location while they're touring? Are there destinations for them to cycle to? If they just come circle in a loop and go home, that really isn't tourism. They haven't spent any money in our community. That's just wear and tear on our infrastructure. And so we want to make sure that we're creating an experience for them, um, so that they're able to, to spend their hard earned money in our community. Um, so again, for this ACT Dev Plan, we are looking at existing, um, supporting those existing businesses first. Do they want to create new experiences and helping walk them through building that business plan for that experience? Um, are they able to build experiences that are all year round and not just the summer? Um, it's not a quick fix. These things take time to build. We have to test them. Visitors actually need to come and give feedback on. What they like, what they don't like and how it's integrated. And so that's part of the work that we would do. Well before we, we pass it along to Tracy and her team to, to market. We've also talked a little bit about crossover opportunities with agriculture and creating agritourism experiences. Such as those of uh, pack of walks in the corn mazes. Visitors are really demanding and they always want something new and what's on trend. They want to create those Instagrammable moments to share. And we need to be continuously adding new and new adventures for them to share. And so that's somehow that we're working together with them. And so our output measures are out, um. The number of tourism businesses that we visited, the number of agritourism or on-farm diversified uses that we've launched. And then the amount of visitor spending annually. Next slide. So under our small-scale manufacturing, there's a number of parties in this sector as well that we need to align with. The Cortha Manufacturers Association is one of them. They offer great workshops and best practices for our manufacturers to make sure that they are, are at the top of their game. We also need to be sharing opportunities with Invest Canada, Invest Ontario and Ontario East to elevate those opportunities in Peterborough County. Again, trying to build um, the supply chain. When we meet, when we uh, meet with businesses, we also want to partner with our local EDO partners. This is an industry that is rapidly evolving. It's highly skilled, it's very technical and awareness of those jobs is critical for youth to see and continue to pursue. So our businesses, um, have shared for years that workforce is their number one priority and concern. So we're trying to look. Um, at, at programming with the Cortha Manufacturers Association to support those entrepreneurs. Um, this year with council's approval, we also applied for ROD funding to help our local businesses explore new markets. And get more trade-ready, again, trying to expand beyond this local region to sell across Canada. And part of that funding application is training them to do that. So key output measures are including the, the number of manufacturing businesses visited. The growing members participating in Cortha Manufacturing Association and the number of small businesses supported through programs such as ROD. Next slide. So strengthening county and township collaboration and much of this work is very simple or practical. It takes a lot of effort and we're a small team on the surface. But the reality is that we're part of a much larger network that includes EDOs from townships, the Chamber of Commerce, Community Futures. Business associations and community organizations that are all doing good work together. And so we have created a collaborative framework and I am proud to say. That all eight townships have agreed and are working within the, this framework. Um, we all know what our lane is, what we should be doing to support business, what the local townships are doing to support local business. And so it's much smoother now that we all know what each other is doing. I think the other piece that's very important is although we know we're also ready to pinch hit in the event that something goes wrong and somebody isn't able to support. I know a lot of EDOs, um, at the township level have other job duties uh, to do as well. It's not just a full-time job of economic development. And so what we do is we understand what individuals are doing. We meet monthly to talk about priorities and how we're working together. And where they, they need backup or where we can um, encourage them to join in on initiatives. So an, an example of working together through partnering, that, back to that. That back to that social media workshop, um we split the costs with one of the townships. Um, just to be able to say this township in particular had a high degree of businesses that were saying they needed support. But we agreed to come to the table, bring in a private consultant to help them deliver this workshop. But we also invited other businesses from across the uh across the county that also did participate in this event. And again, great feedback and um the businesses loved it and have asked us to continue. What we have determined though through this collaboration is that we still haven't thought of everything, um we're still going to get caught up, but the. Communication is there for us to be able to talk to each other to say, what are we going to do about this? When we were building out that collaboration framework, we had a lot of what if, who's going to do this? What if something negative happens to a business, who is the first person to phone that business? What can we be offering as backup support? We've agreed that the county will work on regional initiatives such as rural transportation, workforce development projects. Large initiatives that impact multiple communities, the county can share those best economic development practices, we can create those templates and those joint projects. Um, and the local townships are the feet on the ground inside each community. Um, subject to funding, of course, we'd also like to create a shared customer relationship management system. That the townships could use and that way all of the data is being collected, it's available to townships, but then could also be elevated and aggregated up to the county. Um, it's an activity that all of the townships have agreed that uh we should pursue where possible. And so the outputs for this section um are. Um, the number of pilots, uh joint initiatives that we have launched, the number of letters of support that we've received for these joint projects. Um, it's township satisfaction surveys and we also hope to have CRM adoption rates that people are 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 participating in using it. Next slide. Enhancing real estate, this is never a new topic, but it is an important one and we're likely going to experience some economic plateaus again with some of the situation in the US. But this is the perfect time to review the real estate review and together with townships, look to unlock some of those shovel-ready sites. Um, at least help us rank those properties that are most attractive. So that we can get out to that real estate market at the time when people start to come knocking again. We also through our um. The collaborative framework, we created lead handling protocols on how are we working together and how does this work? So the county will be going out and knocking on doors to Realtors, but if the county receives a call. We share it with everyone. We've got this lead, we need five thousand square feet, does anyone have it, do they respond back? And we've all agreed to that. We've also agreed that if a township receives a lead, because different leads come from different ways. That the township is is able to handle that lead however they want to. They can handle it themselves, they can call us in for support. But what we have asked is if they want to go on their own and they're not able to satisfy that lead, that they at least give it back to the county so we can give everyone else a fair shot. And again, these are the the collaborative framework that we're we're doing and using on a on a daily basis. Um, we do want to track how many development inquiries we have generated and how many we were unable to proceed and for what reason were they not able to move forward? And then another key outputs for you that we'll have is celebrating the work of Eorn and highlighting the number of households and businesses with access to high-speed broadband. As that is one service that businesses cannot afford to live without. Next slide. Um, celebrating success, this is such an important activity and there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes to make this happen. We work closely with the tourism and communications team as well as local media to highlight and showcase our local businesses. In twenty twenty five, we created twenty-five business profiles in Cortha Now, they're showcased on the act dev website under meet our business. Um, we know that we're also trying to attract new companies to the region and they want to know that other businesses are thriving here. So highlighting those businesses are something that is very important for us to do. Um, there was another undertaking that we also occurred this year where we built the local advantage website. And again, spoke to that, that there's a number of tools and resources that we're building for businesses. Um, we're also working with another local business to create video content. Um, doing interviews with local businesses on why they chose to do business in Peterborough County to help us. With having that package of of in why invest here, why are they choosing Peterborough County? Um, our outputs for this will look at the number of small businesses that we're able to feature annually, the number of engagement rates on those spotlight posts and the website traffic. Next slide. We're also trying to build that active economic identity that businesses can relate to. The tourism and communications team have worked with us to help build a marketing kit. Um, to talk about the advantages of doing business in Peterborough County, the toolkit has the local advantage. The shop local, support local, and visit local campaigns um to deliver moving forward. We've received a lot of positive feedback and these are icons that we've shared with the um the Economic Development Working Group and they support this direction. We've often struggled with our businesses don't always align with Peterborough County, they often will say that. You know, they're aligned with wherever their closest economic center is. Our visitors identify with the name the Corthas. And residents identify with their neighborhood, you know, whether that's Keen, whether that's Bridge North, whether it's Buckhorn, it's Absley. So they they uh, we use a lot of names to try to convince um, you know, how we talk about this region. And so through the local advantage, the shop local, support local, visit local, we're giving. The tools and resources to use that across the county consistently while still giving those um identities that people prefer to use. Next slide. So community approach, I know there's been a lot of talk about community development, but in this department, we're looking at community development beyond economic metrics. It's about ensuring that all residents and businesses have equitable access to supports they need to compete in this economy. And so we know that there's longstanding challenges such as transportation, housing, childcare and broadband access and workforce that all limit both residents and businesses. And so by addressing those systemic barriers, we can create an environment where businesses are better supported to grow, attract talent and thrive. And it's giving business that location advantage. That by locating here in Peterborough County, they have a better competitive advantage. Because we're listening to them, we're hearing what their concerns are and we're trying to address them better than other communities are doing. And so residents will have access to better and meaningful employment, education and services and businesses are getting that support that they need. Slide. And so local businesses have shared that while they can service their client, they also want to ask about uh the rest of, they want to be more engaged with the rest of the the community as well. Um, they want to learn about what is available here, they can service their own client, but they don't know what to do or how to sell. Um, and so we're going to be creating more business-to-business connections. And so after everything that we've talked about, the benefits and outcomes and all of those activities, what we hope the outcomes are. Are that businesses throughout the county are met with regularly, businesses are celebrated and supported. Programming is developed to respond to the business needs because new needs will arise. County and townships will realize increased tax assessment. There will be diverse employment options are available for job-seeking residents. Community supports are in place for business workers and and visitors, will see low business closures. Will increase business investment and maintain visitation levels during traditional tourist season and increased stays during shoulder season. As well as that increased visitor spending. Next slide. And so today we'll be looking for any feedback that you might have, we'll incorporate that feedback. And then we would like to go back out to use the Engage platform to seek additional business invent in input for the next four to six weeks. And then report back to council with all of this feedback again uh with an official launch in January of twenty twenty six. Next slide. And so again, just a reminder that grow stands for growth, resiliency, opportunity and workforce and what we'll be focusing on. Thank you.
Thank you. Huge amount of work we've done. All of it up for input, question, yes.
Uh, thank you, Trudy Warden, thanks for the presentation, a very wholesome presentation, covered off a lot of questions that I had. Um, and um, uh, you know, I want to sort of reinforce your comments around uh. Working as a community with certainly Community Futures, other organizations that uh. You've um, you've worked with and uh, I I chaired the loans committee at Community Futures and. It has resulted in 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 more micro loans, we call them under twenty thousand dollars, these are existing businesses that. Have gone through the Business Advisory Center, uh, these are existing businesses that need additional training as you talk to and uh. You know, working in in uh cooperation with uh groups like Community Futures. Uh, is resulting in those folks investing in their business to uh up uh their social media or uh their CRM system, buying a CRM system that will help them. Um, attractive businesses and so on, so um, I can say from looking on the outside in uh that uh. Your your strategy has been effective in in generating those uh, those opportunities for those businesses. In fact, I have to go over there uh after this meeting and then sign off on another loan, so. Uh, it's been working quite well. Uh, the branding of the Corthas, uh, I don't remember conversation we had about six years ago around that. Um, that it wasn't Peterborough and the Corthas, we were the Corthas, uh, we weren't Peterborough. And uh focusing that branding on the Corthas uh, I think would would produce much better results and I, so I really uh, thank you for that. Um, the economic development um um within the municipalities has always been a concern of mine is. How do you work together to make sure you're limiting overlap uh and duplication of services? Um, so I'm glad to see you're working through that, I'd like to see a little more um detail on that down the road as to exactly who does what. Um, and I I think that's an important factor, if every municipality is participating, we really have a team of. Twelve, fourteen people working on economic development in the county. And again, my concern always has been um, you know, identity crisis as far as who's supposed to be doing what. So I think additional work in that area is is going to be important. Um, the area around real estate is something that I've been focused on for a few years, our township. Uh, owns a lot of different properties that were obtained by different reasons over the years. Um, our staff have come up with a list of seventeen municipally-owned properties that have economic development potential. And um, we're moving forward with analyzing some of the. The 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 properties that have more of an opportunity with development to again, try to make them shovel-ready. Uh, I think, as you say, developers want to come in with shovel-ready, they don't want to buy something and have to spend three years doing an official plan amendment and the rezoning. When the municipalities has the capability of doing that much quicker uh to get them shovel-ready. So I think those are important aspects of your presentation that. Um, the townships should should look at as far as getting our own properties ready uh for development. Uh, I know you're talking mostly about um properties that are owned. Uh, commercial properties, manufacturing properties and that sort of thing, but the municipality's own property that also can be uh, be made available. Uh, for for that development, so just my comments, more than than questions, thank you.
Excellent. Go ahead.
Here. Oh, sorry, you were a little bit faint. Um, thank you. No problem, uh, Rhonda, uh, thank you very much for a very excellent presentation, it's clear that. Uh, your group is doing a lot of good work, it's focused. Uh, and it seems to be impactful, so I thank you for that. Uh, I do have one suggestion and I think I made this the last time, which is I would like to see some sort of bottom-line measures. Uh, about outputs. So I think you had one in there which was the uh dollars that tourists are spending. Uh, so that's an excellent one, along with the number of tours that we're seeing and whether it's growing or shrinking. Uh, in the area of of businesses and economic development, uh, not. Maybe annually, it would be nice to see the number of businesses that are in our county, is that number growing or shrinking? And for those businesses, are their sales overall growing and how much? Uh, equally, what, how many employees are uh employed locally in these businesses? And is that growing or is that shrinking? So it's really the bottom-line measures uh that would indicate whether or not all of these activities that we're involved in. Are truly making uh a a difference in the the the, you know, the right direction for us for growth. Um, so there, those are my comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Armstrong. Uh, any other further comments and if not, just to. Sorry, Counselor Graham.
Uh, thank you, Trudy Warden, um, just a, just a question and I'm sure there's a a thread that runs through, you know, a lot of the work that's being done, but. One of the things that um that I thought was a slight omission with regards to some of the foundational pillars is is communications. Um, if we want to do all these good works and I, it it has an overarching beyond economic development standpoint as well, but from a county operations as well. We don't have a great uh captured audience for a lot of the investments and activities or even concerns or ongoing works uh within the county. Um, ninety percent, I think, of the calls that are related to county-level services come to the municipalities. Um, and you know, if we're going to be investing in in trying to create opportunities for enhanced learning or, you know, try to. Integrate with the economic or sorry, the employment community. I think one of the things that we need to keep in mind um is is how we effectively penetrate the communications into that space. Because it's something that the county also struggles with and municipalities struggle with it too. You know, there's this expectation that transparency and communication obligations have been fulfilled through social media as we transition away from paper, which. Obviously, when there's no mail delivery, it's uh, it's even more difficult to reach out to the community, but I really think. That there needs to be a a real granular and prioritization of. How effectively we are able to communicate with the population in the county. You know, we we've had, you know, when we were doing public meetings with regards to the budget, we were only having one representative show up. I think that's a problem and that, you know, we're going to become more and more uh. Reliant on digital forms of communication, but we really need to ensure that in doing so. That we, you know, generate an audience for that co- output. And I think it holds true for the economic development efforts that we're making as well, and I know you can be, you know, that's a smaller population. And it's maybe a little bit more accessible and a little bit more, you're doing a lot of, you know, in-person um, you know, interactions and phone calls and follow-ups and and et cetera. But I think one of the things that we need to be looking at is how well the county en masse and especially in economic development. Has penetrated or captivated the audience in which it's trying to serve, because it's something that we really. Struggle with and is only going to get more complicated, you know, with the diminishment of, you know, local media sources, et cetera, like. We, I think we really need to put a prioritization on and quantification on how. We are able to penetrate with the messages we need and want the population to serve. And so I think that's an element that I think economic development could be a a showcase of, but also an expansion or exacerbator of from the county standpoint. Because it's something, especially at the county level, the townships are slightly ahead in some capacities, but. That's just because you know you're in your township, maybe more so than you know you're in the county of Peterborough. But I think the county really needs to to prioritize that and I think that there's a role for economic development to play in focusing on that for that audience and also benefiting. The county for the residential population as well.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor. Graham and now uh go to Sheridan and then I'll come back to Counselor Amy.
Uh, thank you, and through you, so the county does have a county communication strategy and we'd be happy to make a presentation to county council on what that outlines. Um, and what the the penetration has been with the various modes of communication that we do use. Um, one of the things that we strategically did when we looked at bringing on uh economic development tourism. Was capturing the Corthas in terms of the Cortha's website um as we, when we transitioned from Peterborough, the Cortha's economic development. Um, the county did um take that URL and all of those followers um with with us as part of that, so that was a strategic move. Um, that we did for that and I do know that Tracy and her team work hand-in-hand with the township comms people. Um, we create toolkits, um, we do communication campaigns, so there's been considerable amount of work done and we'd be happy to bring up that presentation to council.
Thank you, Sheridan, and now Counselor.
Thank you, Trudy, um, yeah, thank you, Sheridan, uh, North Cortha reaps the benefits of that for sure. I've heard a lot of positive feedback uh, uh, in particular this year, um, and and sort of picking up on what uh. On what Matt said too, when it comes to communications, one of the things that I loved was the road tripping in the Corthas, your partnership with Cortha Now. And I love that's all the Corthas coming, I mean, it was Cortha, Cortha and how we had the Corthas all of this, but um. Just how timed that was and how it highlighted and I learned things about every municipality uh in the county that I didn't know. Um, and I think, you know, hooking up with an organization like Cortha Now who has communication and marketing down like. Awesome, right? Um, makes a lot of sense, because there's no point you making the wheel and I just see and it's about, it's a local connection as well too. Um, I I love that um initiative and I hope you guys continue on that path, because it was very effective, thank you.
Thank you, I don't see any further questions, so I just want to say thank you, Rhonda, your team, we're going in the right direction, this is a a breath of fresh air, so thank you.
Thank you.
So uh, the uh resolution is here to um certainly uh to amend the plan according to the input that uh you've heard today. And then it'd be posted on the county's Engage platform uh to get further feedback. Moved by Deputy Warden Sennis and moved by. Counselor Armstrong, all in favor, thank you. Okay, I'm wait, yeah, welcome Jenna, Humphrey Operations Coordinator and Frag Myde's Champion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Warren Clark to council. I feel that Terry and Tom, they did an excellent job earlier explaining, you know, why we're concerned about Frag Mities. So I'm going to take my time here today to let you all know what we did with the funding that we received. So we were made aware of the funding at the very end of May that we were successful in receiving the $19,000 that we requested. We were also aware at the time when we asked for the funding that there was a 50% match through the county, whether that was cash or in kind contributions. So the first thing that we did was we hired a summer student. I was, I needed assistance with the Noxious Weed Program, taking up most of my time. I knew I wouldn't be able to take on this program alone. So we hired a summer student that mapped the entire county road network. So that's 700 kilometers of road, or if you want to take a look at it, 1,400 kilometers of road allowance. During that time, they mapped 280,000 square meters of Frag Mities within our road allowance, primarily present on public land, but some of it was also private and a mix of private and public. The map that they used, it was a mobile application that our GIS department had developed. They were able to map the population location, the size, which was measured in square meters, population density, the hydrological conditions present where that population was. And like I said, whether it was present on private land, public land or both. So they were successful in mapping this in just one month. That means with the remaining funds, we had spent about a quarter of our budget, left me with about $30,000 to spend. And so we decided at that time, we were going to reach out to our weed spraying contractor to begin spraying within the road allowance. I didn't have enough money to spray every single population, which is what I would have loved to do. So instead, I used the map that GIS had developed and I asked them to bring in layers like our provincially significant wetlands or layers from third party groups that had properties where I knew that they were trying to eradicate Frag Mities on their properties and they intersected with a county road. And from there, I was able to do a shortlist and I've sent that to the contractor. And they are currently spraying, they began just this past Monday throughout Peterborough County. And they are going to keep spraying. Hopefully they hit all of the spots, but they know that my limit is about $30,000. And so if they reach that limit, they'll have to stop. The great thing about it, because we're taking a map based approach, is they're mapping all the locations that they're currently spraying and they're going to be returning that data set to myself. So I am looking forward to going out this spring to those locations to see if we've had any success in the Frag Mities eradication or decreasing the population size from this herbicide spray program. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, Jenna. Now we'll open it up for questions. Yes, Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, Jenna. Good morning. Certainly, it's it's a daunting task. You started out by reminding me of an old, a wise old saying. As you travel down the road of life, remember that for every mile of road, there's two miles of ditch. When you come upon these stands of Frag Mities, when they're isolated stands that are almost completely contained within the county road allowance, I think we can do some, we can have an effect on that. We can, we can wipe it out. That's great. But far too often, these stands that are in the in the county road allowance are just part of a much bigger stand that extends into private property. So is there any plan? Is there, how can we accomplish anything with, in those situations, which are very common?
That's a great question. I think that Terry kind of talked on it a bit earlier with taking more of a collaborative approach. And if we're able to have data sharing agreements with some of these third parties that Tom spoke about earlier that are willing to take an active approach to eradicating Frag Mities, we might be able to select those areas of county road segments where we're willing to do our part on our side of the fence, they're willing to do their part on their side of the fence. And collectively, we can hopefully see eradication. The the biggest struggle that we had with the funding is we weren't allowed to make any public announcements about it until the M and R had stepped forward and announced the who was successful. And that didn't occur until almost the end of September. So it was a very tight window of time for me to be able to reach out to working groups to say, hey, we have some money. Can we work together? And so for this round, I had to take my best, you know, educated approach in using provincially significant wetlands. You know, not selecting isolated populations that would require the contractor to drive, you know, a large distance just to tackle a small, a small Frag Mities population and try to get the biggest bang for our buck. But if we're, you know, able to continue to apply for the funding and able to have some data share agreements, we might be able to work more collaboratively with private landowners or lower tier municipalities or other working groups.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Yes, Deputy Warden said. Thank you, through you. There are many cottage associations that are struggling with this problem as well. Is there the ability for them to apply to get the grants that we are using? And it might be worthwhile supplying us with that information to the different townships because a bunch of us have cottage associations. And I think it'd be worthwhile for them to have that information.
Can I defer that question to Terry?
Yes.
Absolutely. I'd encourage any of you to pass this information along. I'll make sure the funding information deadlines are shared with all of you.
Thank you. Counselor Lamb said.
Yeah, throughout many municipalities in in Peterborough County, Trent Lakes included, you see these start to pop up all over the place, just small infancy growth. Is there a good plan to get or eradicate that? Like, I mean, we could find volunteers, we could get people to do it. We just don't know how to do it, what to do and when to do it. But I think it's more sharing of information as to, because, I mean, the old Guts Colma Forest that group would absolutely like to get rid of the Frag Mities on the side of County Road 507. There would be dozens of volunteers that would like to help, but no one really knows what to do at this point. And I think we need to share that information better.
Maybe to that point and question, the group that you are spearheading, Tom? Maybe you could come up and and just how to get a hold of that group?
Yeah, that's, thanks very much, and through you. That's exactly the purpose of this collaborative group, is to identify the most important and promising areas for action and then to empower the people that can take action to do so. In some cases, that will be, you know, a small group of volunteers who can deal with a small population. But the reality is that it requires financial contributions for contractors who, you know, have the equipment to deal with this in other cases. So it's going to be a both and sort of approach.
So that information, then, if that could come to, if you could send that into county council, then we could also put it on the website to contact you as well and and we'll share it with all the municipalities. So I have Counselor Martin and then Counselor Amy. And Counselor Graham as well, I just seen.
Sorry, Warden, if I may.
Yes.
Just part, part of the funding as well, I think with your question, I'd like to touch on as I'm working with our communications department on some social media content. And we have some great traction with our social media content with the Noxious Weed Program. A lot of engagement with residents of all of the municipalities created some great conversation. And I know we're optimistic that when we release our social media content, now that we're allowed to, that we we can engage the public and get that conversation going.
Thank you. Counselor Martin.
Thank you, through you. And that answered my question. Because last year, I haven't seen it yet this year, but education's a big thing and communication's a big part of that because we're getting into fall decorations right now. And I don't know how many places I seen last year when people like to put the corn stalks on their mailbox. I seen Frag Mities on, you know, grabbing them and decorating with them. You know, I think education thing is, it's not a good thing. So don't go there.
And to that point, Jim, in the Christmas decorations, when I see them, they're painted red and I'm hoping that seals the seeds from that way.
Yes, through you. I just, I went for a book ride last week and my colleague was remarking on those beautiful tall grasses beside the trail. You know, it's hard, anyway. But yeah, just to kind of reiterate the whole education thing. Terry, you guys were talking about doing a traveling road show to go to the lower tiers. I love this. I think it makes a lot of sense that you do come out, do that outreach, train our staff to know what to look for. I think ours are pretty good. But we've got, even in our council, when we we bought that brush your arm attachment, I mean, for the greater, it was referred to as the invasive species spreader, like, be careful, right? I think it's really important to do that, lower tier outreach, for sure.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments. So just a motion to receive the report, please. Moved by Counselor. Counselor Graham's just moving, I believe. All right, and a second or Counselor Lamb's head. All in favor? Thank you. All right, we have a notice of motion here in our package regarding the the GE site here that is proposed to be demolished, those buildings. So I will ask the mover if they would like to speak to that. Yes, thank you very much, through you. I think we've all seen in the local media that members of city council have started asking questions about this. And given the fact that the debris that will be taken from that site might, we we have knowledge that some of it's contaminated. They've been talking about it for years. But it might end up going to the landfill, which is in our county. We should be receiving information as to what they plan to do with it and everything that goes with that because it is a cause of concern. And so we're just asking here to be assured that we're in the loop and that we receive the information that is necessary. Thank you. Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Warden Clark. The timing of this is uncanny because I had intended to speak to the two members on our Waste Committee about this issue before I saw the note was motion. And these two members happen to be the mover and the second or on. So I thank you for bringing it forward. You're absolutely right. The landfill actually is in Autonomy, South Monaghan. And we have, our staff and myself have had calls from residents who are concerned about contaminated waste being brought into the landfill. So we need some sort of assurance that that will be regulated and not happen. But but also equally importantly, is the fact that there, even if this material isn't contaminated, there is likely to be a huge volume of it. And we have a a limited amount of space and life left in our landfill. And I think it's important that we know how much material is going to go there and what will this do to the volume, what will it do to the spaces remaining and the anticipated lifespan? I think that's a really critical piece of information we need to have.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. And being on that committee as well, this is where this motion came forward. As you stated, not only the volume, and that's the second paragraph that the city required the owner to provide detailed information. And that concern about the volume was was brought forward at the Waste Committee meeting. Yes, Counselor Whalen.
I took it off.
Oh.
I meant to take it off.
Okay, all right then. So I am going to ask for the mover and the second or, and, yeah, and second or, and all in favor. That's unanimous. Thank you. All right, we will move to announcements. And open it up for announcements. Yes, Counselor Taylor. Yes, please. Okay, are we, yes, okay, we're good to go. Go ahead.
Maybe not. Good. I know that the moment that everybody's been waiting for is coming on Saturday, pumpkin fest. We'll see you all. Thank you.
All right, I have a few. First of all, I'd like to take a moment to recognize everyone involved in the response to the tragic fire that occurred in the village of Lakefield last Thursday. And from the first responders who courageously fought and contained a massive fire. It was just emotionally looking at those pictures, the store owners, the neighbors and everyone who helped that day. I know that a lot of our neighboring fire services responded as they do. We're a community and that's what Peterborough County is all about. So it's just a testament to the courage and the strength of who Peterborough County is. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Also, as you may notice, many of us have purple on today. And this is a recognition of Dress Purple Day as an important initiative that raises awareness on the rights of children and youth to safety and well being that's emotionally, spiritually and culturally in their homes and communities. Traditionally, this was observed on the Friday, the last Friday of October. But this year's day has been moved to tomorrow, August 16. So a symbolic gesture by the, requested by the Cortha Halliburton Children's Aid Society and just demonstrating our solidarity and helps raise awareness in our community for those beliefs. So thank you to everyone on that. And I don't see any more announcements. So we'll move to the confirming bylaw. So a mover and second or for that. Counselor Watson and Counselor Nelson, all in favor? Thank you. And a motion to adjourn. And Counselor Graham and Counselor Whalen, all in favor? Thank you.